Yeah, just the mayor.
Just kind of announce it.
Okay. All the order, the regular council meetings ordered, we stand in judgment of the agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So tonight by zoom, we have Mayor Finnegan. And not Aaron, right? Just potentially another council. Alright, well, we want to start with the approval of the agenda. And Mayor Finnegan has asked that we move. It's the last item of new business discussion regarding, oh, excuse me.
Police Department.
Yeah, we're discussion regarding the police department up to the second item under new business.
After the appointment.
After the appointment.
Okay.
That's okay with you guys, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a change there. As you ended up for the same meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, okay.
Hey Jessica, can you hear me?
Yes, Dan.
You can? Can you give me a thumbs up that you can hear me?
Alright, it's been moved by Councilmember Panzer and seconded by Councilmember Hanson to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Alright, let's move on down to the consent agenda. And do we have any water sewer termination? We have one.
And we also have this individual order, Ben, this is an annual event that happens every year. I hear no problems over there, so.
So can we do the whole thing?
Just move to the move to some of the consent agenda as printed.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as print.
I'll second that.
Alright, it's been moved by Councilmember Bernard and seconded by Councilmember Panzer to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Alright, public comments. Thank you. Alright, well, first up for public comment, we've got Justin Linsley, and you want me to just group you guys together?
Yeah.
Alright, and Kevin. You're left to decide to pronounce your last name, all of us.
It's Colley.
Colley, okay.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Justin Linsley, current president of Elsworth County. And I just wanted to come tonight to introduce our new executive director, Kevin Colley. Um, today's actually Kevin's first day on the job, so been all over town meeting people and uh, wanted to introduce him to you, um, he'll be the base of our organization going forward. Um, I know Alan, I don't want to come and meet with you. Maybe this week.
I'll be the Wednesday night.
Yeah, and talk and get to maybe a little better and um, anyway, we appreciate the support that the city has given us over the years and yeah, hope to continue that relationship and Kevin will be kind of the guy to uh, talk to, ask questions, things like that, so if you want to say anything.
Yeah, no, just feel free to reach out, um. I hope to get to know all of you and uh, look forward to a good relationship with the city council going forward too, so.
Awesome, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Good question, so how, how would we get ahold of you, Kevin? Like, I'm guessing phone number's still the same, but is email?
The same, maybe number's still the same, we see a lot of cars, I thought it was the wall here.
Is that why I thought that was not?
Same, and otherwise it's Kevin and Elsworth County. Should be some bars here, if you can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin, yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm running out, so.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Well done. Thanks. Alright. Well, next up, we've got Brandy with D V A for the Elder Abuse Awareness Month proclamation.
Thank you for having me. Whereas according to the National Council on Aging, one in ten seniors in America experiences mistreatment or abuse, including domestic and sexual violence, financial exploitation and neglect. And whereas abusers of older adults are both women and men and are usually family members, caregivers, healthcare workers, or other trusted individuals.
Okay.
And due to the shame, fear, and other barriers elders face in reporting abuse, only a limited number of victims are able to get the help daily. And whereas elders throughout the United States lose an estimated 2.9 billion or more annually due to elder financial abuse and 28.3 billion annually due to financial exploitation, such as the illegal taking, misuse, or concealment of funds, property, or assets of a senior for another's benefit. And whereas too often elder abuse threatens the livelihood of older individuals, erodes their extraordinary potential and increases their risk of death by 300% compared to seniors who have not been mistreated. And whereas else worse, vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care communities, and medical settings. And whereas we all have the responsibility to support the safety, welfare, and dignity of vulnerable vulnerable and older adults and must work towards ending elder abuse by assisting victims and accessing the information and supportive services they need. Creating better and more resources for older adults in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of elder abuse. Now therefore, the City of Ellsworth Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim June 2025 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the City of Ellsworth and urges all citizens to work together to help protect elder adults from abuse, neglect, and exploitation because it is imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elder abuse.
Okay.
Very good.
How did you present this? Okay. What's the next? Or would you have a picture? Alright. We send it to. Yeah.
Hold on, step out for a minute, yeah.
Trust him? We need to shoot him again, so. I don't know. There, sure. Don't you think? You should just. Take your glasses. I will do.
I just to make sure. Here he is.
Okay, thank you guys, thank you. Alright, we'll move right along to unfinished business. Got Charter Ordinance number 28 relating to elections and the appointment and removal of city officers.
Madam Chairman, uh, and council member and mayor, um, on Zoom. Um, this is of course, last November, the city passed Charter Order 27, which changed some of the duties of the mayor in making appointments. Um, there was a amendment made that night, um, on, and it was approved by a five to one vote, because the mayor does is able to vote on Charter Ordinance according to state statute. Um, however, through the publication, the public published, uh, the deputy city clerk, there was an error made, and so we've really talked before, um. Let's just start, we're doing right, we've had discussion last three or so meetings about charter ordinance, which now be 28. It'll repeal 27, and I believe 22 also, uh, which covers some things. Basically what this ordinance does, um, is the council, the council as a group will hire the city administrator, the city clerk, the police chief, and again, the city attorney, which you enter contract with those. Um, there will no longer be annual appointments. So in the past in this city, and that's what for the state statute, that covers the cities of the third class with this former government, actually, there's probably three different, I know three or four, three or four kinds of government, city authority, but in our former government, um, so it's no longer, you know, so in other words, every year you want to sit there and says, you know, I appoint them, you know, city minister, I appoint the police chief, they will not be appointed. If they ever have to be removed, it'll be a council decision and you go through a normal process, if something's terminated, so be it, and you go through that normal process then. Um, the other change of course will be is now the committees, uh, the committees, the boards will still be appointed by the mayor, approved by the council, we just changed that piece. And then the other piece, um, basically is if there's a vacancy in the council, um, and again, in the past, the mayor made the appointment and was approved by the council. Um, the downside with that one is real simple, I mean, again, I for the former government is, um, and I'll just, you know, me and the media's were side by side, if the mayor says, I want to point out, and you guys go, no, we wouldn't be on it. And so he appoints me, and you guys say, no, it's my man, he goes, I ain't gonna do it. And so, so the, I noticed talking about, does this change the inequity? No, I mean, anything's still gonna pass, it's gonna take three council members, or four council, or five council members. You're not one, there's one council made up of five people. And nothing ever happens unless at least three you vote yes. And, you know, the only thing, the only thing I can think of, uh, since most recently here, that we now split councils, I've been here, was the chicken vote. Uh, was a three two, and even that night, if, if the mayor could have voted, it'd been a three three, which meant it wouldn't have passed. So I think democracy was still in place, you're not ruining democracy. Uh, you know, each of you voted your own thoughts and, and and I'll support, I think we all support your ability to vote as you wish and should, and should vote as you wish. Because you may vote from your heart, you may be voting from past experiences, you may vote for the people that talk to you in your neighborhood. Who cares? You still have a vote, you only have one vote. And even though there's that balance in there, um, you know, when I worked in the same former government in Western Kansas, when I first started, 36 years ago, had the same former government, and even though the mayor doesn't have a vote, the mayor, I think, you know, drove the agenda, because they do the agenda, they could, so, you know, they discussed things, it became a group, and you, so I don't see a big change there, so that's a big part about that, uh, you know. That's all I have to say about, which is the problem, um, if it does get passed, it gets published twice in the, in the local newspaper, the first paper, the in the best reporters, they want to call yourself, yeah. Um, it gets, it gets published twice, and then it become, in effect, 61 days from the second publication.
Then. Well, I'll, I'll bench our number 28 relating to the elections and appointments and removal of city officers be adopted.
Can I make some comments real quick?
Yeah.
No, yeah. Okay, comments can come in a second, so it has been.
Can I make some comments real quick? Jessica?
When it's time for discussion, you may.
Alright, is it time for discussion yet? I'm having a hard time seeing you on Zoom and hearing you, but can you raise your hand when it's time for discussion, please? Thank you.
Alright, it's been moved by Councilmember Panzer and seconded by Councilmember Bernard to, um, adopt Charter Ordinance number 28.
Correct.
Uh, relating to elections and the appointment and removal of city officers be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes, can I, can I now, thank you. Appreciate that, sorry for, it's very difficult on Zoom, can everybody hear me? Can you raise your hand if you can hear me? Alright, very good. This all sounds great, but you're, you're, the state is a state for a reason, they love checks and balances, this kind of does away with that. What I, what I'm worried about is you're, you're not only getting rid of the appointment process, you're not even talking about the suspension process, that has never come up, those are potential tools that mayors can use in the future, and you're just kind of wiping them away tonight, so I'll talk more about it during the police chief piece, because I think there's there's something I want to say then, so I'll, I'll wait for the rest of my comments until then, and I appreciate you moving that in the agenda, but you know, clearly I'm gonna vote no for it, I'll let you move on and we'll, we'll go from there.
Any more discussion? Alright.
Probably do a roll call, I, I scroll call. Madam Chairman. I would suggest if you do a roll call, although and we have to mandate you do it, or if you want to do it, I'm fine.
I can move. Alright, we'll vote by roll call, uh, Councilmember Hanson, aye. Councilmember Panzer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bernard?
Aye.
It's not long, right? Correct, okay, and I also vote aye. And all, and council, or excuse me, Mayor Finnegan.
Um, I want to say something more, you know, emphatic, but heck, no.
Alright, well, motion passed. Okay, um, I don't know how to talk to you, Alan, City Administrator. Yeah, we had a question about something that was on consent agenda, so can I invite people to come up and speak about some of that? It's um, about the Kid's Ninja Warrior, or do you want to move that to the end of the agenda?
It's, it's vast.
Okay, they had some questions. Do we want to address those now, or at the end of the agenda?
Yeah, we should, let's do it now.
Okay. Lindsay, you want to come up?
I just got a couple things, I have a lot of things to make, but I'll take your time. Um, first of all, can we make sure those splashback bats are, bathrooms are all good to go and unlocked, and then that is closed?
Just work with staff and.
Okay.
You're Lindsay.
Yeah, I'm Lindsay, I'm so sorry. Um, and then in the past, we've had to have a release first duty liability, do I still make? Do the.
See what's due in the past.
Patrick gives you the thumbs up, so yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Same thing, we'd like to keep, I mean, I think the motion has to keep already the same, that the people, I do like to have this.
Okay, um, and remember the whole issue last year of mowing the park? If that's them.
Yes.
That would be done.
Communication, we got.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Job.
Okay, well, let's move on to new business, appointment of a city clerk.
Madam Chairman, um, of course, it's normally, as we, so Charwood was, um, is published two, two times, so undefeated, so, um, last week, um, Mayor Finnegan, Councilmember, uh, Council President Hughes, um, Councilmember Hanson, um, City Treasurer slash, you know, City Clerk, Mueller, um, Finance Director, or HR Director, Coonrod, and myself interviewed a person for, uh, the role of Treasurer. And the mayor that evening, City Clerk, excuse me, City Clerk, the mayor sent me the, the uh, message that evening, because like I said, with, with the delay, everything died. Uh, Mrs. Allen, I appointed Louise Zamblanding as the City Clerk for the City of Ellsworth as soon as we're able to, thank you, Mayor Finnegan, Mayor of Ellsworth, Kansas, and, um, Ms. Blanding is in the ground tonight, so. Well, all you need right now is to approve the appointments. And I think city staff would encourage you to all approve it.
I would make a motion that we approve the appointment of Louise Blanding to our new city clerk of Ellsworth acting immediately.
I think she starts next Monday.
Oh, next Monday? Next Monday.
I have a lot of things to clean up my.
I'll second. Alright, it has been moved by Councilmember Panzer to approve the mayor's appointment of Louise Blanding as city clerk and seconded by Councilmember Hanson, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Sue.
Alright, next up is discussion regarding the Ellsworth Police Department.
Madam Chairman and councilmembers and mayor, um, last week, we received the letter resignation from Police Chief. Um, it'll be leaving next week sometime, it was due notice, um, um, I've had, already had two councilmembers reach out to me about a discussion, how we want to move into the forward. Do you continue with the, with the Police Department, Police Chief? Do you take a look at other organs, other options, and two, one of the options that broke through with two councilmembers was, do we consider abandon Police Department, they're working agreement out with the county at Sheriff's Office? And there's goods and bads about, I'm actually in the middle of writing a paper on this, so, because you're not gonna make decisions tonight, um, and I've contacted different city managers and and there's a lot of goods and bats and indifference, and, and of course, I think there's a lot of things, one, first of all, is the sheriff willing to do it? And then secondly, we're in agreement with the county, and how would that look? And how do you transition across, and people, and jobs, and employment, there's all those issues had to be considered, because if they're not hired to be at unemployment, we've got to deal with, I mean, just, we just got to think it all out, if you're gonna do it. Uh, there is cities of this size, um, the nearest one probably in population to us, as far as geography, would be Ellsworth. Uh, there's not a police department, nor is it center, nor is it across, nor is Lincoln, or Lincoln Center, or whether, yeah, the town itself, Link, yeah, it's Lincoln Center. Um, I know that, um, Gisotto and Edmonton do not either, um, Toewanda making the switch about three years ago. Toewanda's a little smaller, so there's a difference, and there's goods and bats and indifference. But at least two of the councilmembers, they would like to at least talk about it. And so that's why I'm, in my, in my notes here, um, kind of mentioned it out there, you know, or we, can we keep and then hire a new chief and move forward that way, I mean, both options that you have to decide, or want to move, what the community wants to do.
Hey, can I, can I make my comments now, and I'll just check out? Is that okay, Jessica and Alan?
Okay.
Yeah. And, and I, this is the perfect timing, because I'm, I'm kind of kind of letting you know, I'm merging Charter Ordinance 28 and what I think about the Police Department, and some of the problems that they've had, I think they're interrelated, so once I read this, I'm gonna go ahead and exit the meeting, you're gonna do a great job, Jessica. It's gonna give you food for thought, but I ask you just not to respond, just to listen to it, hear it, hope for the constituents to go, you know, he's kind of right here. And, and it's coming from the heart, it's completely supporting our Police Department. Um, but let me read it, and then at that, at that moment, I'm just gonna say goodbye and leave the meeting, does that sound good to everybody?
Thanks.
Alright, today, we voted on Charter Ordinance 28, but more importantly, we accept the resignation of our Police Chief. We arrived at this intersection of the two events for one reason. We haven't accepted the fact, we didn't do our constituents right by how we handled the issues dealing with the Police Department over the course of the last 18 months. Charter ordnancing, censuring, and being confrontational won't get us closer. These techniques have failed, as a result, public respect and trust of us and the Police Department have deteriorated. Our Police Chief had enough and moved on. I fully support our Police Department, and I'm not in favor of any discussion that includes their dissolution or harm to them. I vote no to Charter Ordinance 28, which I already did, and yes to building up our police force, but first, we must address the issues once and for all. We can't just say, this is in the past, clearly these issues aren't in the past for constituents. So thank you, hopefully you can kind of ponder those comments, I'll go back and review the video, and everybody have a wonderful June day, thank you.
Again.
My response is, why do we need more draw? The KBI, the county attorney, the city attorney, they all in agreement with the way it was handled this last year. Let's, right, let's move on and be done with it. Uh, this imaginary thinking of someone's collusion has to stop, or the city will never be able. That's my opinion. Hey, you have to say anything more, Patrick, to it?
I don't, no, I think that, I think the agenda items is kind of in different direction than the city manager, I want you guys to discuss. So.
No, no, I, I brought it up, um, you know, again, the, I'll make my comments here, as far as what happened in the past, I don't care. It was happened 18 months or so ago. It was dealt with, that person is no longer employed by the city. Um, the city did their actions, I mean, that person is, is gone.
Exactly.
And so as, as I quoted one that letter, it's, note to you, all this previous, as my daughter Macy says, cram me a river, build me a bridge, and get over it. Get over it, and that's what we have to do, move forward. Now, discussion on hand is more in your hands now is, is where do you want to focus, and like I said, I don't know if there's a right or a wrong, I just know that two of you reached out and says, let's think about it. Think about it doesn't mean you're gonna do it, because I said, there's a lot of issues we have to do discuss. If you want to do it, what's good and bad and indifferent, I have pros and cons myself at it, at that given point in time, I'll tell you. But again, I reached out to their city managers and and fifteen or so years later, I got back there, this far apart. And that's not a bad thing, and maybe we'll share that expertise, and I plan to write a paper for the next meeting. Yeah.
I do have something to say on this whole topic. I think you're doing the community a dis distrust if you do it in the Police Department. Big time. I wouldn't look for another job. Some things have come up lately. People start their nose where they don't need to be. Getting their information off Facebook, other departments, and coming to the city administrator about it. That's not how it needs to be. That I agree with you. That made my decision easy. You gotta let the Police Department be the Police Department. Let the chief run the department. Get out of there. Follow the policies that are here, treat the department right. You don't, in Alan's words, I've been doing this 32 years. You're not gonna be somebody with my experience in here again, especially acting like that. And I think it's a huge mistake if you take this Police Department away and turn it over to the county. Oh, we got, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the governing body?
Uh, what, I don't, where did this start? Like, how do you do, I've never heard of this deal today.
Well, I had two councilmembers reach out to me, and, and I kind of alluded, and I kind of alluded to it in my agenda back. Uh, about, it came to me, and of course, any administrator is gonna think, what are you here as councilmembers, and at least put it up for discussion.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll stone record, I called Alan about it. My father was sheriff of Lincoln for 23 years, and they converted the chief of police, the Police Department, to the Sheriff's Office. It made the expense of the vehicles less, it made the expense of the cars less. And you had an elected official overseeing the whole city and county. And it worked good, I'm not saying it's perfect for Ellsworth. All I said was, let's consider it and look at the whole thing, maybe it's something we want, maybe it's something we don't want. But now's the time to look at all the options before we make another decision. That's my opinion.
And I reached out to Alan about it too, one, just because we can't get staff. I mean, we're saying that we're understaffed, we can't get police officers here, so it was just a thought, I didn't say dissolve the Police Department, I said, is it time to look at something like that? Lincoln, just again, Lincoln does it, so it was just a thought, it's not saying, let's dissolve the Police Department, it was just.
I didn't say that either.
Yeah, it was just something about, if we can't get officers, then do we need to collaborate?
We have open discussions, sir, and we're not doing our job.
Okay, I didn't know where it came from, I guess, I've never heard of the pill.
Yeah.
This came out.
I called Alan today, I didn't know what was going on. And I think the city can office right now is thinking about doing the same thing.
And like I said, I, you know, give, it was so pleased the council, I would suggest that, uh, table this in the next meeting, and again, we're not, not a whole lot of time issues here. Uh, we'll have to do some adjustments, and we'll all work for that in the house. Um, but, um, you know, I, I wrote, you know, like I said, I've reached out to other cities that and they're all, and I agree with, I agree with all, I agree about everything, these guys have us priorities, because city officials, they get elected. Elect's not a good thing, so you're turning it over to an elected sheriff that can change and everything else, uh, but there's some trash issues, there's a lot of things to do, you know, of course, I was city manager beside the, the city, county, and the state of Kansas, where they don't have a Police Department or a Sheriff's Office, they have a a county Police Department. And they've had for 47 years, that can never happen again in the state of Kansas, because state constitution changed about four years ago, I guess, where you have to have an elected sheriff. And good and bad and different, there's points of views, and, you know. And again, if you, if you, if you ever had a thought about doing it, now it's time to think of the talk. Because you don't want to ever have a talk and have to displace a chief or anything else, but, and there's a lot, there's a lot of talk that has to happen, because you're displacing people and how that's gonna work, I mean. But again, you know, is it worth discussion? Um, it's, it's up to you guys. I'll provide information if you want it.
I mean, I don't know what you do here, I don't know what to do either, that's why we're talking about, I mean.
I mean, I think to your point, Dom, like, having an open discussion about it isn't gonna hurt anything, as long as we're weighing the pros and the cons.
I mean, I think to your point, Dom, like having an open discussion about it isn't gonna hurt anything, as long as we're weighing the pros and the cons and. Keeping what's best for the city of Ellsworth in mind, like, we're not, we're not making, we're not, did you say Soto? Uh, you know, we're not those other. Yeah, we're not those other communities, so we truly have to see what's best for our community, but.
You're right.
Having an open, honest discussion, I think is the best way to get there. And my opinion.
I would suggest you table to the next meeting, and I'll make a position at that time.
Uh, we need a motion?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we table that till our next meeting.
I'll second.
All right, it has been moved by council member Panzer to table the discussion regarding the Ellsworth City Police Department. To our next meeting, seconded by council member Hansen, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passed, that will be table till the next meeting. We are back to review and approve our proposals, right? Okay, review and approve proposals to conduct site exploration services for the wastewater treatment facility improvements.
Chairman and, and council members, um, Brian Foster, he's consulted with me, and, um. You know, as I told you, the last meeting, I believe, on the proposed site reviews, um, the cultural study that has been done. They have to wait till after weed harvest to do the actual walk around, they've done all the background work, and that should be no problem. And then once we get that, we'll apply for the official budget table, uh, run over it. And then have that money available and everything else, so we'll do that, but the next step, of course, is do show tech work. Um, Brian reached out and had different proposals that are in the packet, um, I'm, he's recommended, and I agree his recommendation. To hire U E S, um, to, uh, conduct the site exploration services. And the price is fourteen thousand three eighty-five. And ultimately, that'd be paid through the loan proceeds, initially, maybe come out of the fund, and we're fine, we're fine, we're doing that right now. Because we'll be able to come back and catch us.
Your first response is that, please?
We can just still pay back loan, but still, yeah, from a, from a now-to-day financial point.
Yeah.
Place.
You guys good with it?
Yeah.
Council president coats, I move to accept the proposal from U V S to conduct site exploration services for the wastewater treatment facility improvements. At the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars with the provision that the work will not commence until after the twenty twenty-five weed harvest on that parcel.
I'll second that.
I think it's been moved by council member Hanson to accept the proposal from U V S to conduct site exploration services. For the wastewater treatment facility improvements and the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars. With the provision that the work will not commence until after the twenty twenty-five weed harvest on that parcel, seconded by council member Renard. Any discussion?
Madam, chairman, um, just so everybody knows, when you look at the packet that was online, there was four proposals, this is the lowest proposal. And also responsible, and one of the proposals didn't have as many, made all the key requirements, this one, another one did.
Thank you for that. No more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. All right, next, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, adopting the Kansas Homeland Security Region F Hazard Mitigation Plan. If you wanna come on.
He is off about.
What would you like to know?
Why do we do this?
Uh, well, uh, so years ago, we used to do a mitigation plan for just the county. And about, probably at least ten years ago, not fifteen years ago, we started doing regional, there's four counties in our north central region. We get together, we have public meetings, you guys are all invited to them, if you wanna go, most people don't. But we started doing this as a region to make it more cost-effective, instead of having county pay for each. Read, or each county doing your regional, regional, now the Kansas Division Emergency Management pays for it, and then FEMA approves it. Adopted, the reason we adopted as a county or a city is just because if there's some certain mitigation funds available. Um, we can apply for it if we've adopted this mitigation. There's free disaster mitigation money, sometimes there's supposed to be disaster mitigation money that's available, uh, one of the things that, um. You can use, well, there's numerous that you can use it for if it's available, and. Some of them are, um, advanced assistance, acquisition and demolition, think of your old hospital, uh, flood mitigation, generators, shelters. Warning sirens, weather radios, those are just some of the mitigation things we can purchase with mitigation funding. But we have to have the resolution in place first, so, any questions?
Council president coats, I move to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two one, adopting the Kansas Homeland Security Region F Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Also good. All right, it's been moved by council member Renard to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. Adopting the Kansas Homeland Security Region F Hazard Mitigation Plan, seconded by council member Hanson, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Okay, next item on the agenda is new development.
Couple weeks ago, me and Alan had a meeting with David Kyle. He wants to, uh, he would like to get a development of duplexes out of the Paner Commission by the good Sam. Uh, if you can get the land bought and all that. Uh, the lots are so small, you, they really wouldn't fit for duplex, so Alan's suggestion was to do a planned unit development. And if we did that, it would have, they'd have to have plans for how everything would be laid out, setbacks and all that. The planning commission would, would suggest either approved or disapproved, and send it on to you guys to vote for. Uh. It would be, it would, uh, be designed for the, the land be designed for the most efficient use of it and preserve. Property values within established district already. And, uh, you know, like I said, you'd have the final say on it. But what he's looking for is, uh, if there's any, uh, specific reasons that you can see that he. That we would turn it now, he would like to know before he spends the money again on, on planning and all that. He's the one that, uh, wanted to do the, the mobile ball fields, and he's still at the half. Where are you planning on doing this?
It'd be against one fifty-six, or fourteen, I mean.
One fourteen, not, not north, not north of me.
No, no.
Okay, good, you can do whatever.
Be along the highway then?
Yes, that's the point he's looking at.
Madam chairman and council members, um, thinking of the government as, as Dylan mentioned, are known as a PUD, um. It is a, is a tool that kind of, when zoning quite doesn't fit in setbacks, because, you know, we've got an R one, R two seven. So an R one setback, it's just not fit in that area. Um, go to a Salina or a Hayes or a downtown city in Manhattan, you go to a shopping center. Uh, like where Dylan's is on, um, profit that goes in up there, well, you're buying, we're rolling mall waters. Those are PUDs planning in developments, because they have multiple uses in there, and they combined this into one big area. And then maybe mix zoning in there, mix everything, but that's, it's approved as a package. So it basically pulls out the whole area from a zoning, from R one, in that case, that, that area. And then puts it as PUD, uh, setback issues may change a little bit, but it's a way to utilize land and keep that. Rather than have to do a separate area of every single property, that way you just get a whole district. Um, of, you know, I mean, lots that would be out there, but, and they may, you know, there may be some combination of lots of things there. But it's a good tool that's used a lot of cases, again, the ones that I think of always are shopping centers, where you have, you know, building beside building beside building. Well, that's not, that's allowed in downtown, where you have side-by-side buildings, but normally side-by-side buildings are not allowed in the outside areas. Unless you have a PUD, which combines a lot of zoning uses, again, any zoning use, we have to go through a area of planning commission. Ultimately, they'll make recommendation, and then it's approved by this, this body.
But it's still the housing, right?
Yes, that's why it'd be developed as housing, but the setback issues will change, and it allows us those things to happen. To utilize a space that, if you look back when it was developed years ago, probably was, it all fought through. Uh, but you can take care of them and utilize a piece of land that has a value to the use.
Are these houses, these duplexes, is the rent income-based, or is it just regular straight rent?
Just straight rent.
Like any other property in town, you rent it and it's not income-based, or anything like, it's not subsidized by the federal government or anything?
No, no, it's not using tax credit, so I asked that question.
Okay, very good, yeah.
There is some covenants out there, but we found them and looked at them, but that's gonna be his issue, not ours.
Not ours, okay, good. Well, I don't see a problem if it's all worth it then, because we're not looking at, I hate the term, low income, let's use income assist. At branding, you know, housing, this is where you're gonna pay a normal rent for a nice duplex, and.
These are actually single-family units.
Single-family units, okay. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that.
And our planning mentioned, we were gonna look at them, the first time, they said, they, as well, man, these are people that they talked to liked themselves. Where we'd be getting quality housing.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either.
He, he just wanted to know.
Do you need an actual motion on that? Just our word? Hey, you got our word, I'll.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Simon.
Is city facility agreements of use and fees for USD three two seven. This agreement covers the use of city hall, recreation center, sports complex, and golf course, and expectations of both the city and USD three two seven. Take away Ronnie.
Wait, so we have to, we, we did our, kind of our agreement with the school this year, just for the fact that. Uh, like, say all, I mean, they still use it for all their activities and games, practice schedules. Um, you know, when we raised it here a few years ago, we included the red center. Uh, not knowing how much they would use it, well, it does get utilized, I mean, not as much as city hall does, but it does get used. But they have life for cheerleading practices out there, um, they use it this summer, every Friday, they use it twice a week in the fall. Um, Stuka had a couple of events out there, like the junior high fun night, and then their high school fun night, so, um. That as well, um, so that's kind of why I see the cost and those facilities went up. Um, and then as far as the ball field goes, you know, when they started baseball and softball. I mean, it's been many years ago, kind of the agreement was, is, is that they would prep the fields on game days. You know, take care, clean in the bathrooms, trash, and, and all that, and of course, I still did the mowing and, and, you know. Work in the field when it need, need be, um, coaches were asked to do some things too, but I think things got. A little lax over the years, and some of that's, you know, falls on me too as well, but I think we just needed to relook at it. Um, so some of the expectations as far as that goes will change, um, a lot of the, the prep and stuff will fall on me now. Whereas before the, the custodians did it, now they will get their custodians back at the school, which will help them out considerably. Um, that will take them two or three hours out of the school day when they have to go prep the fields, so. Um, but there still are some expectations that I expect as part of what they need to do. Um, and that's all listed in, in there as well, and I can, I've talked to Miss Hill, Vic, she, she knows, and she hasn't formed this work about it. Um, I don't think she's, what I've heard, she's told me that, you know, she hasn't gotten any pushback or anything, they, they understand, and. You know, they really don't know where, got anywhere else, you know, you know, for those, you know, continue off of those programs, so. So that's what you see in front of you, um, I know we've got, um, Patrick, he changed some things as far as, you know, the things they do out there for the golf team. He has already received their payment for a year, but we just, you know, wanted it more in, in a contract, and. Contract, once signed, will be a two-year contract, and we'll just kind of reevaluate here in a couple years of, you know. What we need to do, so.
Didn't you have the, what you were erasing on your own, I thought it was on there.
What's that?
Did you have the, what you were erasing it by, I thought it was on there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, if you look, it's just, because it was seventy-five hundred, and now the city hall and the red center goes to nine. And, uh, you know, for the sports complex, it'll be three, so a total of twelve.
Uh, is our gym needs the air commission?
No.
No, I didn't think it was, so.
A lot of people don't like that.
Yeah, but the nine thousand dollars then, uh, for utilities, the heat, the gym and everything, and heat, the, arm, you know, in good shape like that.
I mean, basically, I mean, honestly, it's, I mean, technically, uh. Uh, the blowers, there's one that works, but, you know, the, down there in the, where the blower is, it will put so much heat, it just. Let's see, you know, the jam through those vents, so we, you know, seldom have to ever turn on those blowers. But, but yeah, I mean, they do, make them use the facility a lot, it just.
Are you comfortable with the nine thousand on utilities then, and your maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I want to notice.
So we did this for a two-year, we did it for a two-year, that way we don't let it go for twenty years, and you go, oh my gosh, we're behind, we have to catch up in big jumps like this.
Yeah.
And we had, I think we had a great discussion when, uh, we met with the, and there was a lot of shit to give, you know. And that's kind of why it would be nice to kind of readdress this, yeah, and it's nice to have that checklist on there as well, because. You know, I'm not gonna be around forever, and neither is Ron Davis Junior, and, you know, gotta look at, you know, into the future, and, and so many new comes in. This is the expectations of both parties, and who needs, who needs to do what.
Yeah, as long as you feel that covers our utilities and city expenses, I'm fine with that then.
And you know, the one thing I told him too, is just now that we've taken on a little more responsibility as far as game preps, and I mean, you know, early season, it won't. Be that big a deal, but, you know, once you get into May and, you know, where my schedule gets a little busier. You know, that's kind of why I put on there that, you know, some of that on the checklist of, you know, the fields, getting drug and all that, and just. It may get that, or it may not be on practice days, so, yeah.
Sounds good. Council president coats, I would approve the facility agreement fees to USD three two seven for the use of city hall, recreation center, sports complex, and the golf course.
I'll second. Great, it's been moved by council member Renard, approved the facility agreement and fees to USD three two seven for the use of city hall. Recreation center, sports complex, and the golf course, seconded by council member Hanson, any discussion? One, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I begin, all right.
I'm up.
Yeah.
Agreement approval of increased rental fee for use of the Ellsworth Health and Recreation Center to Brittany Casper in her Ellsworth tumble dance and cheer classes.
Yeah, what you see there is an increase of twenty-five dollars a month. Um, and I know there was partial payments in December and in, in May, because she didn't go the full month, but. That will no longer be the case, you'll have to pay the full month for, for that. Um, you know, I don't know what the original agreement was she had with previous city administrator, but there was like a hundred dollars a month. So, um, is it enough? Probably not, but, you know, she's got an established program. I mean, if it's something we wanna look at every year of increasing, then I think we need to do that, but I don't think it's right to, you know, just to. gouge her and charge too much to where she's gotta charge her, you know. Charge her, you know, participants, you know, and her, but. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, I mean, if you do the math, yes. Probably paying, you know, what she's paying an hour is very little, so, but, um. At least this is a start, you know, so.
Um, just so you know, Ms. Casper reached out to me, uh, by email. Um, she understood the hiring to earn twenty-five, she would like to have the parcels for December and May. And I, and personally, I agree with Ron that we're fine with the rate she has. Uh, in comparison, the church pays a hundred fifty dollars a week, use the building. Um, she does store equipment at our, at our facility as well, so I, you know, I think this is a start in building, I mean. You know, I can make a hard mission, at least be hired that, but I think this today, uh, Ron did a good job and. Start to move the deal, and I think that's important and, um, you know, to recoup, and that's kind of the approach we're taking. Um, if you wouldn't mind, how is it working with the pool fees this year? Any issues that I know, I haven't heard of one?
Nope, I really. Bet with the lady today that got it passed, that she voiced her opinion, which was fine.
Have you got a decrease in kids room?
No, we haven't really looked at the numbers, but I, I mean, as far as, you know, attendance, but of course our. Old pass fees and everything are, are out, of course, they should be.
So we have new is about six thousand dollars. As reported against her last week.
Yeah.
I guess that's what I meant when I, did you notice that there was a decrease like?
No, I mean, like those first two weeks, of course, it was snow and the weather.
Right.
But I'm just gonna pick that now, so.
I would like to say, you know, and again, I feel good about what the council was doing. You're bringing items, you're talking about, you know, and we made that decision two, three week out on those changes. You did it on the, did it where it's so rates, you did it on twenty-nine and twenty-eight, you did it on this, and again, give time in public. Rather than wham bam, we keep going, so. I think what we're doing as a, as a team is really good for the community.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to nuke the approved increase in facility rental and old renovation center from one hundred. Be one hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, for the Ellsworth tumble dance and cheer due September through May.
I'll second your manifesting. All right, it has been approved by Councilmember Hanson to approve the increase in facility rental to Health and Recreation Center. From one hundred to one hundred and twenty-five dollars to Ellsworth tumble dance and cheer from September through May. Signed in by Councilmember Hanson, any discussion? So I just want to be clear in this motion that it's one hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, right? And to your statement earlier, the church doesn't store anything at the rec, right?
They pay one fifty.
One fifty and they don't, they have their own stores.
Church is using the whole facility.
Okay, which is a little bit different, yeah.
Uses like on Monday, she uses half the gym where if I still have the instructional basketball. I still do that, and then on Thursday, she uses studio break, so.
Just again, the commission, council to know all of.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Absolutely.
Okay, any more discussion, any more questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passed.
Thank you.
All right, next is discussion, discuss zoning regulations regarding accessory buildings in an R-one. Single-family dwelling district.
Now, Chairman of Councilmembers, um, yes, if you have my agenda report, um, this is an interesting one. Um, this winter, when I first got here, was approached by somebody that tore down a building, a house, and wanted to build. A shop on this property in R-one zone districts, other zoning ordinance doesn't allow it. And then there's been a couple others, and Mr. Ranker is here, cause he, he wants to build a, a fish. Under the building, on the lot that he built, an accessory building with no house on it, uh, a few years ago, so he, because it's in the front there. Um, and here's my concerns, I mean, and again, my interpretation of zoning code, it wasn't a book, it's maybe different than passing administrator. I'm not gonna argue that, because I know when he was, when he built that shed a few years ago, actually, the city manager, same as your side off on. So I get that, you know, either one, we allow, if you allow it there, if you allow it elsewhere, it, it'd make a lot in town. Can somebody put a building that they don't live by in an R-one district? And those are always the issues of concern, again, uh, you know, do we need to make a change to the zoning ordinance? That's always a possibility. Do you put a process to allow a special use or conditional use for men, getting a change of zoning ordinance? Um, but again, you know, things always concern me, if you don't follow the code you have, and which apparently we haven't been. What other parts of that code are you willing to give in on, the city, the city staff says, oh, we'll give that one. Well, then all of a sudden you create chaos too, so that's always my concern, again, I will be here, you know, forever. But the point is, is, you know, it's a discussion, what he wants to do, like I said, I will agree with him that he was allowed to build that shed a few years ago. Um, you drive by today, um, there is, in my mind, non-R-one uses on the property. Like there is other properties in town that have the same, so I must pick on that one, but there's other ones, because they have a shop. They build on a lot that's over here, they live over here.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of that around.
Yeah, but it all happens being maybe just sort of large town too, up in your neighborhood.
Just one across the street from you.
This, they don't do there?
Yeah, they, well, they live on the lot next to it, but they went to the other lot, then built a shed.
Yeah, but that, that's actually allowed. It becomes one of the solely lot, now we can talk about replanning those things, that's for another discussion, so those are, those are differences. And again, what are you creating and, and, you know, we know of at least two hundred lots in this park out over here where they run the bill. Well, off to the neighbors' side, that's why, if you want to change, do you change it to a special use program, we have to go through a hearing process. Or a condition use movement, there's possibilities that can happen, but the way I, I interpreted it, and that's what I thought, I didn't agree on this one here. Interpre, they're not allowed right now, because R-one uses are for R-one reasons. And that means residential housing, single-family housing, putting a shop or building on a lot, and there's no residential housing. You know, and a lot from a zoning standpoint is contiguous on property. So it's not, you know, lot five, and it could be lot five and six, seven, block B of, you know, um.
So your house, you're on, um, like, comment, uh, four eleven Brad, I bought four twelve, uh.
Right.
Team Bradley, next door to me, I could put a building up on that, there's the two lots that join each other, correct?
Yeah, and then, you know, we've had discussions about replanning those things, and a lot of times, it's from a county side, and I haven't gone into those details here. For a county standpoint, they'll combine as a lot from taxation standpoint, everything else.
Yeah.
I mean, and I've lived in the town, well, there's, openly, we had twenty-five foot lots, so my house was all three lots. You know, um, that's kind of normal, you know.
But if we want to make an exception, the one thing I have on Mr. Ranker's favor is. He was told initially that he could put that there.
I'm not gonna argue that either.
Yeah, he was told he could put there, he ordered a building, he paid for the building, he was told he could put it there, and then all of a sudden. It doesn't qualify, I think, we're not here to make life difficult for people, but since he was instructed that he's doing the right thing. And yes, he could put it there, we should step up and say, yes, Mr. Ranker, you can, because you pulled. And you spent the money to do it by a city employee, I don't think it'd be right in the house to come back and say, no, you can't. Well, I don't want to operate that way.
Well, and that's a, I, I take the point, I just want to jump in because, uh, Alan, Alan always says he won't be here forever. I might be here longer than him, I hope so. Which if that's what happens, either I'm here or my predecessor will have to deal with this issue, um, it's come up several times the last year and a half. So, uh, let's, let's put a pin in Mr. Ranker, in some ways, he's just, has the bad luck of being. The one that, that kind of, it just keeps coming up, and now it's time to deal with it, um. You know, I, I agree with Alan, the code, if you, when I read the code, it says, don't hurt this app, you know, and my. I don't have a philosophical problem with changing the code to what it have, but I, it, you need to follow the code. Cause the, because, yeah, we have this situation, we have that situation, we want a code that anyone can pick up, read, know what they can do and can't do with the problem. That's just gonna make our city bad, that's, that's the way every city should function, you should know exactly who it, you know, everyone has the same rules. Quite everybody equally, and this is what you can do. I, I think the justification in time, when they wrote this code, when they said you can't do it, it just didn't make sense, people didn't use their property that way. It seems to me like these kind of buildings, these big sheds have gotten less expensive and easier to put up, and more people are interested in them. I think if you go down the path of, so I really strongly, at least go on record. Put, let's try and make a solution, whatever you guys end up with, that works, that applies to everybody in town, so we don't have this every six. Cause we will have this come up every three or six months for, if we don't want it.
We have two more this year.
Yeah.
They were, and again, this was a little different, I had to buy all that.
Yeah.
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 I think, but there too, we're told no from the get-go, because I saw it and I said, well, we got a perfect number. And I'm not blaming the devil, because in the past, it was allowed by the administrator, so I'm not, you know, don't blame there, it's how the improvement, you're.
Moving forward, we can do this, but in the past, I still think he should be entitled to do what he. He was told tired of her.
And, and, and always, my question, the only question is, if you say he should be entitled, is it, are you, I'm hearing you say he and everyone else should be entitled.
No, we should have to give him the exemption for what he was told.
Is Alan, I'm gonna find, like, I think we're gonna find foreign people who say they.
And we're not blaming anybody, just that he was told, and he spent sixteen thousand dollars for whatever, and why should we perish it? No one did anything wrong, it's just advanced, but that's my thinking, he should get it.
I think so too.
He should get a.
Moving forward, we need to.
Make that clear.
Get something in there where you can, do you either go through the special use or something?
Yeah, do you, do you guys want to make it go through the process of changing your codes and other people do the same thing?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, first, now, I think if you do it, the plan is, I mean, cause I've rented this other places, it's to declare, uh, there's two different things. One, are you allowing an R-one lot, a residential lot, to have a shed that's for personal use or not only for personal use? And that should be a different process when we do it, they should, they need to make clear that they're gonna use it for a personal use or a commercial use. And if they want to do the second one, they need to be clear on their paperwork, cause what, as a different place I work, we make them kind of. You know, swear on earth, basically, I'm gonna build a rec shed and I'm not gonna start doing the business in it, cause the temptation for some people is. Hey, I've got this nice big shed, and now I'm gonna start doing business, and if you're a neighbor, that is a different use. If my neighbor wants to store some stuff, have a nice shed next to me, I may be okay with that, but if my shed's, my neighbor's gonna run a. Business out of there, that makes me feel differently, so I think as the plan goes through, you can just say, okay, you can use an R-one. And if, just for example, R-one people can build storage sheds for personal use. They're not connected to a business, a resident will allow that, and if, but if they want to rezone it to commercial, or in special conditions for commercial, they have to make that clear at the time. Or else the city's gonna tell them, no, you didn't apply for commercial, Alan's got a good point.
Oh, would that be on lots that are part of your living lot or this little lot I'm throwing down?
We gotta make it clear, right, like, I, I think, I think.
Yeah, so, so, so if I buy a lot over here, decide we put in my pickleball order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you should do two, you have to do both process, like, I'm just saying, you have like both, you have to say on the application, I want to build this here. And then a different piece of paper says, and I'm gonna do this, if it's not resident, if it's not personal use, you say, and I want permission to do this thing on, cause otherwise. That, that's, I think, the only, the only big issue I can see from it is people build these sheds and then. They don't become personal use sheds, and they sell it to somebody who thinks they're running some whatever kind of business out here, and that, that changes the neighborhood.
And I think you have to be careful, because we don't want to get in a situation out here all the time here, and we, we, we kind of discussed with poultry, of those chickens. Is that part of town, this part of town, no, it's elsewhere.
It's elsewhere, right.
So when you have an ordinance, it needs to be across the board. And so you can't have one that goes, oh, deep people over here, they live in this part of town, deep people over here. Where the rich people live, like, you know, that part of town, uh, is totally different.
With that.
I, but you know what, though?
I mean, yeah, you know, cause I'm gonna be building the house up.
Yeah, but, but there are gonna be restrictive covenants that make this not possible, so that's not the city's fault, that's a different situation.
I don't think you look at it too, you take this dilapidated property like down here on First Street, you got two houses that's been barely hanging together. For twenty years, they've never fixed it up, they keep saying they're going to, they're going to, they're going to. If they want to tear that down, and someone says, well, I want to put me a nice shed there for storage, that's beautification.
Then you create, is, you have that ability right now with a zoning change.
You get it.
And, I mean, we have processes in place that you could go through a zoning change. And it would go through the public hearing, again, the public hearing's a big piece, and then approval, uh, recognition by the planning commission. And approval by the council, by ordinance, that if you wanted to have five lots, what I don't want you to get into, I recommend not getting into. Is spot zoning where she's on one way, I'm zoning the other, he's on, he's on the same with hers. Spot zoning is bad, uh, once upon a spot zoning, there is a problem for, don't get me wrong, but try not to. But if you got a group like here, over here, you're talking about, that needs to be turned into another use, that's available now.
Yeah.
Well, somebody built it to that, put a shed somewhere else, somehow now, they can't.
If you go through the process of zoning.
Yeah. Turned down the house over here, needs to go through the process.
That's the problem, but I would probably recommend against that, because now you have a spot zoning.
Oh.
Where, like I said, the situation is, is weird, not, oh, um, you know. Again, I'm gonna follow code till, till not there, and I'm gonna do that, um, and really, there's no exception you can make. You know, from what it comes to the general's agreement is when I could live with that, just because it was promised by an employee and will deal with that, you know.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's unfair to, to let this one go, but I just am trying, and then I just, I, like I said. This is like the third or fourth one, and in multiple states, so I guess the question is, is council directing, I guess, planning and zoning to work on, changing the regs? That would be the motion, that'd be the process.
The question should be allow this to happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And which?
And in the meantime, I'd like to see Joe get a waiver. Or.
I, I just, my personal preference, can't do it, cause you probably agenda for the next meeting to ask the planning commissioner to work on it.
We can get others in, um, but in this case here, I mean. You know, I can, and again, I don't have a, get the consensus from the commission council here, I probably would not have a problem with. Living up with the word that the city employee told.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah.
I think that's, no motion, no nothing.
Yeah.
And I'll live that new house, um, but also no, if somebody else comes, I'm reducing anything.
Okay, that's Samurai Joe.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is the planning commission gonna work on making, making this on?
Yeah, we're gonna, that's me.
Yeah, cool.
And that doesn't need to be motion, right?
And nobody really made a big booting here, it's just, that's the way things have always been, uh, believed in correct the situation.
I would like clarification on that, the building, cause with Ranka, that was put in, I was never notified about it, that going in there all the way is done. I don't know who could, who put it through like that, but I should have been notified, because I'm a landowner up there. And I own six acres of that where his head building is, so I want to know who put it through.
Those are two different, this is a whole different area, this is a different area, no.
But I still want to know who did.
It's within two hundred feet, though, you're not within two hundred.
Excuse me?
You're not within two hundred feet of where you put that building.
Where, who put the building?
You're talking about Joe?
That's a different.
You're talking about the one on.
We're talking about the prospect, yeah, it's a different building, that we're talking about. Good, okay, so, there'll be no action, maybe, then just maybe, okay.
I got one question here.
Yes.
Before Joe, I told two other people, are we gonna stick with that? Westy, Bourbon, and, uh, Ken Arnold, they bought properties, they think they can put a shed on, and then when we found out we couldn't, I told them.
Well, well, you, that's why I'm asking you, so if your planning commissioner can work on it fast enough, then we can make it where it's not longer an issue. I mean, I know you're saying.
I'm a pro, Joe, I just, I'm not, I don't have faith, the other two, we.
Yeah, but we gotta be fair to Delva too, because he's doing what he was instructed to do with previous administrators.
Fixing, fixing the code to say what we wanted to say, so all these.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Work on the code, so what he wants to do will be fine.
Yeah. It's a ninety-day process, so just remember that.
Okay, ninety days.
Just publish in the paper and then a public.
Well, and then you're inheriting everything else.
We're all clear now, tomorrow's safe, but, you know.
Yeah.
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 Okay, very good, Joe.
All right.
Well, we got a lot accomplished, but, but having those discussions, we did.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're up there for, to help our citizens.
That's true.
Not hold them back.
Yeah, but you also, let me figure the others, this is the whole problem that's adjacent to it.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, let's move on to department heads, city inspector, anything?
Nothing at all.
All right, thank you, fire chief, I'm off here. All right, thank you, fire chief, I'm off here.
I don't think I have anything on, unless you guys got any questions for me.
What's your event Friday night, that's a fundraiser?
What was that again?
What's your event Friday night that's a fundraiser?
That is a, uh. The guys that are doing that, Charlie is positive, is, is one of our fire members. I mean, it was his dad that was, uh, killed without getting running, so they're doing, uh, the guys themselves are just doing a fundraiser. Uh, to help Charlie come out.
It's Friday night, right?
Yes, it is Friday.
Friday night, nine, five, seven, it's burgers and fries, you can either eat there or come and go.
And is that the fire, fire station?
Yes, that's fire station.
I like to see the city people step up for that, so it's just trying to. It's part of the support, guys, just trying to help somebody out.
Sure.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's why we have, that's why we have a good fire department.
Okay, Patrick's. Patrick Campbell's not here, right?
Nope.
All right, um, Chief Penny, anything for us?
I have no words.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ronnie, anything else?
I have nothing.
Street Mormon? Uh, call it water sewer department, anything, Mr. Buckholz?
Uh, we're still waiting on the wells. They had a camera and everything, so I'll look to see what that well is gonna be.
Okay. All right, thanks, Dave. Okay, let's move on to the city, Patrick, anything else?
Well, I want to, I want to reading this, so I don't want to talk too long. I'm gonna talk to Alan about, I've got a lot of thoughts about the law enforcement, uh, ideas you guys are going through, I think it's probably, it's a statewide problem, honestly, I know. Parts of it are gonna be evenly Ellsworth, but just the lack of law enforcement officers is putting pressure on forces everywhere. Um, at the same time, I, I, there's just a lot of things to consider, because once you know how the police department, you're not gonna rehire, you're not gonna get one back. Uh, so it's pretty drastic, but you know, a lot of good things going on though.
Thanks, Patrick. All right, Andy of the city courts office.
Yep, we're just excited for Luis to come.
Thank you, I'm gonna start with, first of all, thank you mainly for stepping up, um, last couple months coming to the meetings, uh. We got a great workspace ship, also to Angela who, um, interim city clerk for the last sixteen months, probably. Um, even though she meant her duty, so it called more workload for her, but we'll get her back to later with the numbers again more and. And looking forward to add weeks to the team, uh, we just. It, um, I don't like talking about interviews often, but it was a good interview and I'm very impressed and look forward to working with her. For the few months I'll be here, um, the pool fee thing we talked about, and the, the other, the increase, I think. Doing the right thing, and. If we do things, if you do things properly and talk through like I mentioned, and I like the route this council's taking now, she discussed those. Get, give time for involvement, and you move forward, and I'm really, uh, proud that, that that's happening here. Uh, we are gonna have some discussions about political science, and I said no to Patrick's afternoon, because I think our code is vague. It's also a violation of state statute, uh, we did not get changed, state statute actually allows now to give, don't do it yet. That you can have signs in the right away, as long as they don't cause any traffic problems, but we'll have something next meeting to look at. We'll get a local code that'll match that more, um, the question's gonna be is on the signs. Uh, right now, it says they have to be taken down two days after you. When a loop to the election's over, however, you know, a lot of cities and, and state statute. Because you have forty-five days until the election and two days after. The question is, if there's no primary, can you put them in now? And leave that whole time period, because it's more than forty-five days till November, and again, it's about. The way the town looks, the people driving through, and signs everywhere, but we'll bring that next meeting, uh, because just quote window today and we'll work it through that. Um. Again, the fundraiser, as I mentioned, again, uh, I've been to be there, because. We look forward to move to a community that cares about others, I think that's one of my very proud part of that. Um, tomorrow I'll be gone, um, I'm, you know, only three, four days a week, this is a week, but I'm gonna be playing grandpa tomorrow. And play with livestock, so it's, it's everything about my family tomorrow, and then again, I want, um, applaud the council tonight. When you're professionals, I think tonight you had a good level of it, again, I like when you call each other by titles, whether by first names. It shows the community that you are a professional organization, acting together to. Do the best decisions on behalf of the citizens community, thank you.
Thank you, uh, city council, uh, councilmember Renard, anything?
I don't have anything.
All right, councilmember Hanson?
Yes. Um, are we up to date with the mosquito chemicals and for our mosquito machine and everything? To take care of our problem for the summer? I don't think Troy's here.
No.
Well, we have sprayed once already, yeah. Maybe I just want to make sure that we're ready and to go with mosquito spraying, that it's, it's gonna get nasty again. And then, um, on three ten west third, I saw a trench done today with a shovel laying there. And there was no empty barrier, and there's a hose sticking up, what's going on there, do you have any idea?
Yeah, we've already, we're dealing with it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I couldn't see the barricade or no orange tape or anything.
They're not doing anything.
Okay, this means.
Don't can I have any communication about that?
Okay, so let's be able to take care of, very good. Gosh, do I have anything else to comment on? That's it?
Well, we appreciate your short and sweet little. Right, councilmember Hanson, anything?
All right, um, and I just want to say thanks to Chief Penny for all his work he's done for the community and his wife Kelly, um. Putting on my extension hat super quick, I appreciate the support you've given the extension office, but also extended to the citizens of the community, so it's. Been a pleasure getting to know you guys, and, and you'll be missed. Right, and if Dan is off, right, friends, okay, yeah.
All right, and if nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No second to that.
All right, it has been moved by councilmember Hanson, and seconded by councilmember Renard to adjourn the meeting, count six forty-seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.